Well, welcome, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is December 6, 2022, and this is the Iowa City City Council formal meeting. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here, on Zoom.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right. Well, welcome to your city hall, to everyone that is here present in the audience, and to anyone that is on Zoom and other social media outlets, welcome as well. Before we get started today, I wanted to do a few things. One, I wanted to announce that the -- do we have confirmation that the winter shelter at Guy and Link Center is open? It opened yesterday, so I wanted people to be aware of that. Also, I know many of people have heard in the news about what happened in Colorado Springs at Club Q, and so I wanted to just take a moment of silence. The last time we met was on the 15th of November, and during that -- on that day, I did a transgender Day of Remembrance, which was on the -- is the date of that is November 20th. And so, Club Q, this is a gay club where five people were murdered and 22 injured. So I wanted to just take a moment of silence for those individuals. I will also say that I'm very -- Iowa City has been a very welcoming place for our LGBTQ+ members, and the federal government, as many of you may have heard, or at least the Senate has signaled for the same-sex marriage bill, and so I think that is a very positive movement. We just have to wait to see how all of that plays out. Today is the last day for Counselor Weiner. She has been elected, as many know, to a state senate seat, and we're very proud of you. I wanted to just take some time to allow the council and staff to say any parting words to you.
Thank you. I will -- I'll keep mine until the end of the meeting.
Great.
Well, I'll start. Janice, you and I, of course, got the opportunity to join at the same time, and from election night forward, I have learned so much from you and been so grateful for your leadership and your guidance and your willingness to stand up and speak out and act for what is right and just in our community, and we're very excited that you'll be representing us still in the state legislature. Thank you so much for serving on council.
I certainly will miss our conversations and, you know, your brilliance, so good luck in Des Moines. You will need it, I think, but...
Well, I second what has already been said, but truly one of the things that I have appreciated the most, and I indicated it, was the kind of determination and follow-up, that you see something and you follow it all the way to the end, and you find an answer, you pose a question, you dive in with both feet, and all for the causes of how is this going to make our community better? And that's not something that you just put on. That's truly who you are, and it was who you were before you ever got elected, and I'm just thrilled that you're going to be my senator.
Well, I'm going to miss having my partner here on this end of the dais. It's been great working with you, not just this past year, but one of those people that was fortunate enough that we've gotten to work together on other sorts of committees and other bodies before we found ourselves up here together. And so I'm well acquainted with your work ethic and your perseverance, and that's how you got here, and that's how you're getting to Des Moines. And I'd say we're going to miss you, but we're actually going to be bugging you a lot, so we won't miss you. We'll just be interacting in a different way, but I'm looking forward to see what you can do out there and continuing our friendship for years to come.
Thank you.
And Counselor Taylor?
Yes, I'd like to chime in, echo Counselor Harmson, that I will miss sitting next to you in the council seats. It's always hard when a new person comes on the council. You have no idea how they're going to function, how that works as a team player, but right from day one, you came in with your boots on the ground, and you've been an excellent team player, and I'm certainly going to miss you on the council, but am so excited to see you going to Des Moines.
Great. And welcome any staff comments at this time.
Well, Janice, it's been an absolute pleasure. Usually when council members start, we have a ramp-up period of several months to get you kind of up to speed on a number of issues. We didn't really have that luxury in 2020 when you started, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate all the effort and time you went in, not only to the routine business of the city, when maybe there wasn't the support network with staff to help get you up to speed on all those issues, but you not only did that, you helped lead us through a very challenging time in 2020, and that gives me great confidence in your skills and ability to lead at the state level, too. I greatly look forward to working with you in your new capacity as state senator.
I'll just echo the comments of the other counselors. It's great to work with someone who's passionate about being a public servant, and that's been, you know, a part of your entire working career, working first for the federal government and now with city government and going on to state government. I'll just end by saying it's great to have friends in high places, and so like Counselor Harmson said, we'll be looking forward to talking to you with your new role. Congratulations.
I'd just like to say it's been nice getting to know you and working with you, and you'll be missed.
Well, Counselor Weiner, in 2020 is when you started, and January seemed very normal, and then the world shifted. And as the world shifted, I began to work with all of the counselors very intently, but I have to say that Counselor Weiner, when it came down to COVID, she really did spend a lot of time doing a lot of research and making sure that we were updated as a body and doing what we could to make sure that we took care of this community. Not only did COVID happen, but social justice happened as well, where there was an outcry within our community. And I have just really appreciated working with you. Now, she does dig her heels in the sand when she wants something on the agenda or when she wants us to get a message, and I really appreciate that, and I think what we've experienced here and have benefited here locally, we're going to continue to benefit with your work at the state level. So, thank you so much, and we have a few parting gifts for you, and we also have a picture of Iowa City. So, great.
I know where that is. Thank you, girl.
All right. Well, we are going to move on to the consent agenda, which is items two through six. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
No move. Second, Alter.
Moved by Weiner, taken by Alter. And is there anyone from the public that would like to address a topic that is within our consent agenda? If you are online, please raise your hand. If you're in the audience, please come forth. Online, I'm going to welcome Latina Roberts. Please state your name and the city you're from, and everyone is given up to three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Latina Roberts. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Teague. That's -- you're the mayor, right?
Yes.
Okay. I sent an email to you about a month and a half ago. Did you get it?
This is an opportunity for you to talk about anything that is on the consent agenda. If you want to come back and talk about something that's not on the consent agenda, we'll be back at public comment in a second.
Okay. The email that I sent to you was about a situation that I was having with Shelter House, and I've been there. This is my second meeting coming to the council. I came in person, and now I'm online.
Yep. So we'll get back to an opportunity for you to speak about your situation.
Okay.
All right. All right. Anyone else want to talk about something that is related to the items listed on the consent agenda? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. We are on to item number seven, which is a time for a community comment. Individuals will be given three minutes to speak, and there is a sign-up at the back of the room, as well as a sticker at the back of the room that you can sign, and then there's a sign-up at the front of the room. We ask that you give your name and the city you're from, and we're going to welcome Latina. If you want to speak at this time, this is your opportunity. And I also want to just acknowledge that council cannot respond, but we can certainly listen to and welcome anyone to make comments. Welcome, Latina.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, thank you. I'm call -- well, I'm sorry. I'm coming to this meeting again because I've been having an issue with Shelter House, and this is a continuous problem. Now, I've been trying to still get help with funding, with housing from them, and they keep trying to send me elsewhere instead of them helping me. Why is it that Shelter House is allowed to receive all this funding, and they are not helping the community? I am a mother with five children homeless, living in a hotel for four months. I've come in and spoke my story. I lost two children this year, and I'm still homeless, and I've been trying to get help from Shelter House, and they still will not help me. And I really will, even though I cannot answer that, but that is a question, not just for myself and my family, but the countless families out here, why aren't they helping us? There's no way they could get all this money and not place these homeless families. They will place a single person, but they will not place a family. That's an issue. The people is who make the county. I'm done.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Welcome.
What do I want for Christmas? I'm asking Santa. I'll direct my Santa request to Mayor Teague, who could play Santa for tonight. More affordable housing. What this woman spoke about is harrowing. We're all sitting around here, wearing nice clothes, going home to nice places, but we do not have enough resources for people. More affordable housing, more shelter housing, and even a consideration like the ecumenical towers. We can do better. We can have another ecumenical towers in downtown where people who are handicapped or older can have the resources of the town. So number one on my Christmas list, Santa, Teague, and your elves, one who's departing for bigger office over there. I'm asking for this because people have to live. We have to -- you can't live in fear and live in being hungry, and that woman who spoke before me, I don't think you could say it more poignantly. Number two, Santa. Please. Tasers are torture, are dangerous. People do not recover from them. The electric chair in our country is banned. There's a reason for that. The electric chair is considered torture, driving electricity through a person's body. Iowa City Police have tasers. I have seen them use the taser in person, and it was one of the most horrifying things I've ever seen. I believe we should not spend money on those things in this town and that we should work to eliminate tasers, and just because other people in other cities have those things doesn't mean that we have to have them, and we can lead, we don't have to follow. I believe the taser is a brutal device. It is used to encourage compliance, to make people just do anything that they are told to do, whether it's their rights or not their rights. That's the number two. I have so many, Santa. Like a little kid, I would like so many things. I would like public utilities, so we wouldn't have to pay so much for them, public hookups, so we wouldn't pay so much for that. I would like public press. Why not a public press? Do you know all our papers are corporate? We have our friends back there from Gannett and other places. That would be nice. There's so much things that we could have. Please, help us out in the community. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Online, we're going to welcome Felicia. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, my name is Felicia Peeper. I live in Iowa City. I just wanted to echo what Latina said. I know Latina personally. I've been working with her for months, trying to get her the things that the people who are paid to do things aren't doing. I would like to see more transparency. I'm really glad to hear that the winter shelter is open. It's the middle of December. In a colder winter, people would already be freezing. We've already had freezing days. I'd like to see more transparency with our social services, particularly our homelessness services in the community, considering that our homeless neighbors are some of our most vulnerable neighbors, and I find it just atrocious that we don't have any public accountability to make sure that those folks are getting the services that they deserve and that we're claiming that they're getting. There's this whole string of problems, including not only the rapid housing, but also the eviction prevention program, that multiple programs are failing, folks. I've witnessed it firsthand, well, not firsthand, but along as an advocate. I've witnessed the way that staff treat folks over there. I've witnessed how just people are not receiving the services that they're claiming that they're receiving. And just as a community member, I would like to see our neighbors be treated with dignity and that we're putting real emphasis on making sure that people are getting the tangible resources that they need. I think that Shelter House does good work in the community, and they're an important part of this community, but it's also really devastating to see how they don't show up for some people and seeing the effects of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to welcome Hannah, online as well. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, my name is Hannah. I'm also a community member, and yeah, I just want to echo what the previous speakers have all been saying, that I think it's all sort of revolves around the fact that our city could be doing so much more, and it's really easy to sort of profess these liberal ideals, but you know, I really like what the previous speakers have been saying, that to like sort of push us to expand our horizons for what is possible and like for us to think about the fact that we don't have to be relegating these kinds of services to private entities that we're not able to hold accountable. We don't have to be relegating them to corporate entities that are profit-seeking especially. And we see time and time again what happens when we do that. We are not able to serve people in the way that works for them, and we continue to see unhoused populations, you know, despite the fact that, like the previous speakers have said, like Shelter House gets a lot of money. And yeah, so I just would ask the city council to continue to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one, we're going to move on to item number eight, discrimination against Section 8 tenants. This is an ordinance amending Title II entitled Human Rights, Chapter 1, entitled General Provisions to Eliminate the Prohibition on Landlords Discriminating Against Housing Choice Voucher Holders, and this is the first consideration. Could I get a motion, please? So move, Thomas.
Second, Burgess.
All right, and we're going to welcome Eric Gorz, our city attorney, to talk about this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is one of those matters where we're cleaning up city code as a result of state action that's been taken to preempt earlier action that the city took. In this case, the city passed an ordinance that protected tenants who were paying with Section 8 or housing choice vouchers from being discriminated against by their landlords. The state legislature, and we were one of, I think, three cities in the state that I'm aware of anyway, who passed similar protections. The state chose to preempt our ability to do that, and that will be effective January 1 of '23, and so as not to leave language that's void and unenforceable in the city code, which might be a trap for the unwary, we're asking the council to go ahead and repeal that portion. I'll be specific that we were, I'll say surgical in the removal. The protections against discrimination are for a number of income sources and so forth, all of which will remain in the ordinance. We are only removing the part for which we've been preempted by the state, and that's the housing choice vouchers, commonly referred to as Section 8 vouchers. So we are removing that part, leaving everything else as is, and that's what we're doing with this. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Eric, do you know if there are any protections under federal law for people who are using Section 8 vouchers that mirror this?
I'll say I'm not aware of any, nor have I researched that topic, though.
Any other questions for the city attorney?
Do you have a question, Mayor? So Eric, you mentioned this could be a trap for the unwary. What's the risk or the harm to the city in leaving this in place?
Well, are you asking politically or legally?
Both.
Okay, fair. Well, politically, that we would have stuff on the books that's wrong. The example I use when explaining this is if you were to look to see in Iowa code whether same-sex marriage is legal in the state, you would find that it is not, because that's what the statute says. Of course, we're all aware of the 2008 Vernum decision, which makes same-sex marriage legal in Iowa, to say nothing of the subsequent federal US Supreme Court case, but you know, it lingers there and, you know, it may serve to confuse people. Is there a risk to the city legally? I'm not sure.
I mean, just as an example, our next item is something that's been unenforceable on the books for the last three years, and we weren't in any hurry to clean that up.
Right. That's a fair comment. I think legal minds, reasonable legal minds will differ on this point. My personal preference is to clean up matters that are in the code that aren't enforceable. I don't see any point in having them in the code of ordinances. I know other attorneys, other city attorneys disagree and think, well, that's just fine, we'll leave them in place. Oftentimes, there's not the political will to make a change, particularly if they, you know, the elected body strongly disagrees with being preempted. I think that goes without saying here. Obviously, we, the city council, passed this in order to provide this protection. I think everyone is aware that this council would prefer for that protection to remain, so I don't think there can be any confusion about that. But you raise a fair point. If, you know, council wishes it to remain in place, you know, certainly we could do that. We would just, I mean, and to be clear, both with the next item that you've referenced, Counselor Burgess, and this item, I mean, our staff has already made it clear to staff, city staff that works in this area, that the next item has not been enforceable for several years. The new item will not be enforceable as of January 1, so I think there's little risk that we will get in trouble that way.
I did want to just quick follow-up if I could. So do I understand correctly, based on how the strike-through is, that landlords are still prohibited from discriminating based on source of income for all these other reasons except for the vouchers?
That's correct, because Senate File 252 spoke only to the federal housing choice voucher, and so it is only that that we are eliminating. We're leaving everything else, all the other protections in place.
And I think we really need to market that, given how this agenda item reads, given the publicity around the law change. I mean, I really did think, until you said that, that source of income had been eliminated as a way of, yeah, as a protected.
We can certainly work with communications to inform the public of that.
If no other questions, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one? City council discussion.
I was horrified last year when the legislature passed this, essentially making discrimination legitimate. I'm no less horrified now that we're faced with the reality of presumably having to make sure that our laws apply with it. I'm grateful that we have a lot of these other items in here that still exist, at least so far, but the principle of legalizing discrimination just is horrifying.
I just think that this is just sad, sad, sad. I remember when this first came up, and we as a council agreed to put this in there about the Section 8 discrimination, and I was shocked to see and hear that landlords actually had in their ads for their apartments, "Section 8 need not apply," and that was just so sad, and I just think this is horrible that we need to do this, but thank you, Counselor Burgess, for bringing up about the income guidelines. That's good that that's still in place, but it's just yet another indication why we are so happy to have Counselor Weiner going to Des Moines. That'll be great to have her there, to try to avoid these kinds of situations.
I have a question to the rest of council and, to a certain extent, to Eric. It's an uncomfortable question. Do we need to strike this? And I know you said some city attorneys say no. One of the things that I was struck by in your description, Eric, was about talking about, you know, a council having the political will. We had the political will to put in the protection, right? Well, will there be the -- if the language is taken out, is it going to be remembered? Say that we finally flip at the state, and this is removed, and we can put this back in, right? I mean, there's a whole lot of if-then's, and that's a lot of ways down the road. Isn't there an argument to be made to say, let's leave it in there, that it's not enforceable now, but if and when the time comes, we already have it here, and we can just start enforcing it, instead of having to say, let's bring this to the council, whoever they might be, find out if there's the will, go through the language change, right? I mean, so I guess I'm asking the uncomfortable question of can we say, no, we don't agree with this, and we want the language to stay? And I don't, and I have not queried my other counselors, so this is me doing surprise, but it's a genuine question about where we're at with this.
Sure. If you're asking legally, can that be done? Yes, absolutely. Critics of that would say it's a zombie law or something, it comes back from the dead upon, you know, and, you know, the question is whether it's still appropriate for the times. I don't think there's... I don't think there's much risk of that here. I mean, I think, you know, unless there's a change in the, in the program or the federal program or how it works, I think that would be, I think that'd be fine.
If I may jump in on this one, the, I understand the political desire to, to not accept this or leave this on the books. I just want to walk through some of the practical challenges. The city code is a body of work compiled over decades and decades and decades. And the staff here continue, when we, when we research items, we have to go back and try to understand what may have led to the creation of code items 50, 60, 70 years ago. And it's, it's, that's hard enough as it is. If we, if we don't clean up the code periodically, and we leave things in there that are unenforceable, it can become a challenge. It wouldn't be a challenge in the short term for your current staff. But as we turn over, and a resident calls your human rights office 15 years from now and says, you know, I think I was discriminated against because of this voucher, that can cause confusion down the line. One instance isn't a big deal, but I generally would urge the council not to try to make political statements in the code and look for other opportunities to voice your displeasure or advocate for changes. That said, if you leave it in, it's not, it's not a huge deal.
Yeah, I guess I would echo Jeff's comment to the effect that, you know, the staff who are on board now, and have been trained by the people who are on board now, know this, and, you know, know not to enforce it and so forth. But as Jeff says, you know, 10 or 15 years from now, if, you know, someone answers the phone, some staff member answers the phone to someone and says just exactly that, then there's a real risk that they just go and look at the code and give a quick answer, and then, you know, we end up getting sued because, you know, they indicate that that's an illegal action on the part of the landlord when it's not.
That's a helpful explanation.
Any other comments by council? Or do we have public comment yet? I can't remember on this side. Yeah, that's what I thought, no one came up. All right. I guess from, I agree with my fellow counselors here. This is very unfortunate. You know, my mind thinks about, you know, how with the state doing what they did, is there another option for housing choice vouchers to be distributed? Where it falls within the things that are still protected, you know? Is it more of, you know, right now, it has to be given to the landlord? Of course, one example is, is there another direct, indirect way? But of course, there is the, the Section 8 housing review that has to take place. So there's a lot of elements to this at the end of the day. I'm going to vote to repeal this off our books, knowing that this is something that we need to continue to fight for. And it's just unfortunate that our state did kind of prohibit this here locally for us.
Yeah, we do, we do have later in our agenda the, adopting our legislative priorities, and this is really one of those, one of those aspects, is trying to insist and advocate for home rule so we have control over our own ordinances. That, to me, is kind of the political action that we need to do.
Just wanted to agree with my council, members of the council, that this is just, it's just kind of sick that we are in this position. And it's one of those things that makes me stay awake at night, being angry when I see stuff like this that's being forced down our throats. And then when I realize, too, that not only is this a giveaway or whatever for, that helps, that hurts members of our city, but on top of that, the same state legislature has made sure that these same landlords who refuse Section 8 get a nice tax cut. And so that just drives me nuts, so. Whether or not I vote for or against this, that's, you know, that's definitely something that just, just sticks in my craw.
If no more council comments, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Reluctantly, yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number nine is repeal of rental permit cap. Ordinance amending Title 17 entitled Building and Housing, Chapter 5 entitled Housing Code, to repeal the rental permit cap provision. This is first consideration. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Alter. And this is, our city attorney will talk about this as well.
Similar idea to the last item, Mayor, although this one, as Councilor Burgis mentioned, is a little older. And unfortunately, we were not able to be as surgical with this one as we were with the last one. The state preemption was, encompassed entire, the entirety of what we were trying to achieve, which is to try to stabilize some of the single-family residents, neighborhoods, with single-family homes and duplexes. And the state was pretty explicit about preempting our ability to do so, saying, "A city shall not adopt or enforce any regulation, restriction, or other ordinance related to residential property rental permit caps on single-family homes or duplexes." Well, okay, I mean, that's what we were doing, so. So again, there are a number of other elements to this chapter within our code, but the parts that refer to the rental permit cap are all going to have to be, well, they're all unenforceable now, and we are asking the council to repeal them for the same reasons I outlined earlier.
Any questions for Eric? Anyone from the community want to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
You know, this, this is, same, same issues apply. We still have the instabilities. And it's, it's a very nuanced and complex process, or not process, but issue to try to address. And it remains with us, and, you know, we need to try to be as creative as we can be in terms of our, our policies in, in these areas that are affected, to try to address the fact that we cannot control rental properties in the way we have traditionally done that.
All right. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yeah.
Burgis?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 10 is sidewalk cafes expand locations. Ordinance amending Title 10 entitled Public Ways and Property. Chapter 3 entitled Commercial Use of Sidewalks to Allow Sidewalk Cafes Outside of the Downtown and Riverside and Riverfront Crossings. This is second consideration, and staff has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Harmsen.
Second, Weiner.
Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 11 is sidewalk cafes policy changes. This is a resolution adopting a policy for use of public right-of-way and city plaza for sidewalk cafes and rescinding Resolution Number 21-133. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Thomas?
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Weiner. And we're going to have staff come in from our assistant city manager, Rachel. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. So the last item on your agenda was the code portion of those recommended sidewalk cafe changes that you first discussed back in September. So this item is the policy changes. So as you'll recall, our sidewalk cafe program is governed by both ordinance for, for some things and policy for others. So I'll briefly kind of recap what, what the policy changes include, and then I'll be happy to take any questions if you have those. So there's three primary changes. First, we plan to eliminate the collection of deposits for most sidewalk cafes. So we'll still collect or retain any deposits that we currently have on cafes that are in a planter or that would construct or pour concrete, some kind of a platform, just because of that more invasive nature. But for all the other sidewalk cafes, we would plan to either credit or return those deposits through this next renewal period in the coming weeks. And then we would not collect deposits going forward. The second change would be that we are establishing a new minor cafe designation. So as you recall, this is kind of that concept targeting those businesses who, who just need something a little bit smaller than that standard cafe. So this would only be for businesses that do not have a liquor license, and they would just operate under a little bit of a reduced set of requirements. Notably, they would not need to have fencing. They'd have a little bit of a streamlined application process, and then would pay a nominal flat fee as opposed to that square footage fee. These minor cafes would be just limited to two bistro tables each with two chairs each, so really targeting, you know, those smaller businesses. Your Witch Witch on Dubuque Street or Yotopia on the Ped Mall would be good examples of, of maybe businesses that, that could qualify for a minor cafe. And then the final change in this policy, it was actually not recommend, was not included in those initial recommendations in that memo you considered back in September. But we are recommending that we no longer offer the option for sidewalk cafes to be put in planter beds going forward. So any that are there now, they'd still be allowed to op, they, they can continue to operate, whether it's under this owner or if it sells, and it's a new owner operating the restaurant. But we would just not consider or approve any moving forward. Again, this is just kind of recognizing the amount of investment that has gone into our streetscape and amenity improvements in the downtown and in the Ped Mall, and try to maintain those for, for just that vibrant environment. So with approval tonight, we would work on incorporating all of these changes into the 2023 renewal period, which staff would be beginning within the next couple of weeks. Happy to take any questions, if you have any.
None, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come forth. If you're online, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 12, ARPA UI Labor Center Construction Apprenticeship Opportunity Program. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a state and local fiscal recovery fund grant agreement with the University of Iowa Labor Center to administer the quality pre-apprenticeship program. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Alter.
All right, and we're going to welcome Cassandra.
Good evening, council. As you mentioned, as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, the city was awarded the state and local fiscal recovery funds, dollars to respond to the impacts of COVID-19. This resolution would authorize a subrecipient grant agreement with the University of Iowa Labor Center for $435,239 to administer the quality pre-apprenticeship program, which would create a pathway for Iowa City residents to qualify for and secure careers in the building and construction trades. To provide a little bit more information on that, I'd like to introduce Robin Clark Bennett and Paul Iverson from the University of Iowa Labor Center.
Thank you. And welcome.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening. And I want to thank Cassie Grip and Tracy Hightshue and Jeff Fruin for all your work in helping us prepare this. So I'm Robin Clark Bennett, and I'm the director of the Labor Center at the University of Iowa. And I think all of you know this, but just as background, we just celebrated our 70th anniversary. The Labor Center is the only unit within the state region system that focuses on research and education for Iowa workers. And last year, for example, we taught 92 classes across the 99 counties for more than 2,000 Iowans. And so in addition to that programming, in 2019, we launched a new program with the Iowa State Building and Construction Trades Council that makes tonight's program possible. And really, the, the program is designed to address both the acute need for, for skilled tradespeople in the construction trades because of retirements and the, the rise in infrastructure investments, as well as the urgent need for quality jobs in our community, particularly among people and communities that are historically underrepresented in building construction trades careers, and who were disproportionately harmed by the pandemic. So I'm going to introduce my colleague, Paul Iverson, who leads our quality apprenticeship, pre-apprenticeship.
Thanks, Robyn. Yes, I'm the coordinator of our quality pre-apprenticeship program. And one of the things when there were the public comments on affordable housing, there are two different ways of working on affordable housing. One is building housing that is cheap enough for people to afford with the jobs they have, and another is to get people into jobs that pay them a family-supporting wage and benefits so that they can afford housing. And so the, the goal of the Department of Labor in establishing quality pre-apprenticeship programs was to increase opportunities for underserved communities in the building and construction trades. As Robin said, in 2019, we started our quality pre-apprenticeship program, and we are recognized by the Department of Labor as a quality pre-apprenticeship program. Quality pre-apprenticeship program is what they call it, so I'm not bragging, we're not bragging on ourselves to call it a quality pre-apprenticeship program. To be a quality pre-apprenticeship program, you have to actively recruit from underrepresented communities. And the five communities that are a focus of quality pre-apprenticeship programs are women, people of color, youth ages 16 to 24, veterans, and people with disabilities. And we have actively recruited from those areas in the three years that we've been in operation. You also have to have approved training and curriculum, something that the industry recognizes. And with that, we work through the North American Building Trades Unions, and they're using their multi-craft core curriculum, something recognized nationwide. You have to have strategies for long-term success, and those include our apprenticeship readiness program, which is a five-week course that provides additional education and training to people. But it's also our agreements with various jointly trustee apprenticeship programs that are registered through the US Department of Labor. So they meet strict standards of quality for the training that they provide and the jobs that they provide at the end of the training and that, at the end of your apprenticeship. So during the apprenticeship, you earn while you learn. At the end of the apprenticeship, you are given a car, a journey person card that allows you to go anywhere in the United States, and in many trades, also Canada, and, and work in your trade and be recognized as fully qualified. We, it also, you also have to have access to appropriate support services, and that is something that we work with all of our participants to try to access supports that they need to lower any other barriers that they might have. And in this proposal, we are proposing to specifically work with two community partners that will help us in providing those support services. Also have to have meaningful hands-on training, which we do through going to the training facilities of our partners, and they provide both a tour of the facility, but also a project that people do so that they can see what the trade is like. And then we, it also needs to promote the greater use of registered apprenticeship programs, and we do that through our partnerships with the building trades and a number of registered apprenticeship programs in the area. And finally, there is facilitated entry into registered apprenticeship programs. And we do that through the connections that we provide, our articulation agreements with a number of trades, and our ongoing support in helping people to get into those better jobs. We work with jointly trustee apprenticeship training programs because they have been shown to. to do the best job of training people and getting them through the program and having jobs afterwards that are, that provide family-supporting wages and benefits. And so, with COVID in particular and the economic disparities within the Iowa City area, getting family-supporting jobs to people that need them was a focus of our quality pre-apprenticeship program, and partnering with the City of Iowa City, we see is a wonderful way for us to work together to provide those opportunities. We leverage the resources that we have that have been devoted to the quality pre-apprenticeship program. There's countless hours that are donated by industry professionals to help in our program, to provide places to train. We provide administrative support, and frankly, I spend more time on this program than we ask for in funding for this project. But we think that this is a great opportunity for us to take a program that's very important to us and that we've been involved with to try to bridge the gap between where people are and where they need to be to get into these high-quality jobs and to work with the City of Iowa City on some, you know, in helping the people of the community, and we would urge your support.
Yeah, and I'll just wrap up with a few other things because we've got people who can speak much more personally about what it's like to be in our programs here today. But just wanted to say that, you know, in addition to the things that Paul described, I'm really excited about the idea of a consistent four-year predictable annual program because so far, we've been able to provide the program only as grant funding pops up here or there. And so, knowing that year-round, we can recruit for a fall course that will happen each year for four years, year-round, we can do placement with all the graduates as they're available to work, really means everything. And not only that, in term, beyond the individual placements, the idea that over the course of the four years, we can really strengthen relationships between nonprofit community leaders and registered apprenticeship coordinators, union leaders, and industry leaders, means that, you know, at one point, we can step back and those relationships exist. They don't have to build those relationships through us. But we've also got really fantastic infrastructure. This is no longer sort of an experimental program. It's a tested program that we've continued to strengthen. There's a, there's a tool library that we maintain that we make available. There are, you know, computers to provide national career readiness exams where people need them, when they need them. I could go on and on. I run a, I convene a Iowa Women in Trades peer networking programs that meets monthly so that women can support each other who may be the only person on the job site like them and exchange ideas. So, we're really excited to be able to devote and focus a significant time in this program to the Iowa City community, though that's also my home and my kids' home, and partner with the schools and the community groups in this effort. So, we look forward to any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Thank you. All right. We're going to open this up to the public. If there's anyone that want to talk on this topic, please come up to the mic. There is a sign-in. We ask that you give your name and the city you're from, and no one is online at this Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm Bill Gerhardt. I live here in Iowa City. For 14 years, I was President of Iowa State Building and Construction Trades Council. Now, I work solely for the local I came out of, the laborers' union. I want to say how important this program, the Labor Center, is put together is for the sustainability of the building trades. 14 years ago, apprenticeship was our best-kept secret. Our goal is to get that out in front of people. Then our other goal was to diversify the building trades, and this program helps us do that. They, the quality pre-apprentice program uses our curriculum, it's called the MC3, the multi-craft core curriculum, which it means that no matter what trade you go into, the 15 different trades, there's sort of a common denominator, what you need to know, and that curriculum help provides it. So, I'm really pleased that the City of Iowa City is supporting this, and it's important. I'm not sure everyone understands the amount of work that's going to be coming to the area. We've sat through the meetings with the university on their 10-year plan. We know the Infrastructure Act is going to pour tons of money into transportation and other areas. And also with the Inflation Reduction Act, there's green energy projects are going to take off. So, we're going to be needing people, and this program is a great conduit for us. So, thanks to the City Council and the City of Iowa City for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Come on forth. Welcome.
Hey, Brandon Ross. I have a question for anybody who would answer. Considering low pay and at the rate that landlords parasitically take our capital from our working hours, is, does your center actually provide information about unionizing?
And you're, I'm assuming you just wanted to make that statement?
No, I do want to have the person answer if they can. I just was, I'm interested in knowing whether unionizing and labor, my father was a labor construction union person, and I'm just wondering how that, how that affects what you do or if it's included. Yeah, that's all.
Yep, and all comments from here on out is directed towards the council, but thank you. And if you're thinking about speaking, you can get in the line, and there's also some sign-in tabs on the, at the back of the room. It's stickers, so you'll be able to place it there. Welcome.
Welcome, welcome. My name is Jasper Washington. I'm from Iowa City, and I'd just like to advocate for this program because I took it two years ago, and it really helped out. Like, I went into the program not really sure. I had noted down to two, and it definitely let me know that I wanted to be a carpenter, not an electrician. It really helped out with that. When I took the class, it was like the height of COVID, so there wasn't too much work. But recently, I got signed on. I'm a carpenter now, just left my second day of class recently, or today, and I would say that Robin was huge help in that, and I feel like just that outlet and being able to just reach out to her and her do the rest, and then just two days later, I'm signed up for the carpentry apprenticeship. So, I really appreciated that. And then, as I heard her talking about how she wanted to unite the nonprofits, and maybe I could be an advocate for that as well. I'm definitely excited about that. Hopefully, that's something I can do in the future. But yeah, I'd definitely suggest this program. It really helped me out a lot, and so I would say yes across the board, hopefully.
Thank you. And please state your name and the city you're from.
Yep, my name's Cassandra Elton. I live here in Iowa City, and I just wanted to express my gratitude for the quality pre-apprenticeship program. Working in the construction trades has been something that has interested me since I was a child, and I just had no idea how to access that potential career. And so, when I saw the applications available for this program, I jumped on it, and I was very impressed with the way that the program is structured to teach both hard and soft skills to future applicants into apprenticeship programs. I loved that we got to learn about so many different trades, that it wasn't focused on one specific area, and it was really left open to us to learn more about different things and connect us with those in those trades that can teach us those things. One of the things we talked about in class was that the trades, like a lot of careers, you kind of have to know somebody in order to learn what that process looks like to enter those trades. And so, now Robin and Paul are the people that we know, and then they can introduce us to other people to help us reach those goals. Coming from a background in nonprofits myself, I completely understand how important predictable funding is to the success of a program. And like Robin said, being able to know that you have funding for four years for a program like this so that you can be working year-round to really find the people that would benefit most from this will just make this program even more successful than it already is. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Royce Peterson. I reside in Corvale, but my office for the Carpenters Local Union 1260 is here in Iowa City. I'm a business representative there, have been for 15 years. I'm also the chairman for our Five Rivers Carpenters Joint Apprenticeship Training Center, and we've worked closely with the Labor Center since the inception of this to get it going. It has served us very well since it started, not only with our partnerships with community organizations, but helping us get people into the trades. Bill spoke earlier about our need for skilled tradespeople. Currently, we have three locals in eastern Iowa that have about somewhere around 800, over 800 members, and we have 11 people on the bench. So, that just goes to show the need for skilled trade people. We have had a few people come through this program that we've already placed, and I've gotten nothing but accolades from our contractors, from the people we've placed, because they're coming in with OSHA training, CPR training. If they need language, if they have language barriers and they need, you know, some skills in learning construction language as a second language, you know, in English, they provide that as well. So, you know, I think this is going to do nothing but help us to also service the contractors and the developers in the area to build infrastructure that serves this community. So, thank you guys for your consideration in this, and very nice talking to you guys tonight and allowing me to speak to you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Put this on here?
Yes, please. Welcome.
Good evening. How you guys doing? My name is Greg Hearns. I'm from Iowa City. I'm the President of Iowa City Federation of Labor, which is the Central Labor Council for this area, also a retired teamster. I'm just here to say that as President of City Fair, we totally are backing this. You know, this is all about opportunity. You've heard this said many times, this is about opportunity. When I was in school many years ago, you know, we were introduced to things like auto shop, wood shop, you know, metal shop, home economics. You know, these days, kids are being sold the option of you go to college, or you're probably going to end up working in fast food or for some temp agency, and that's not acceptable. You know, this program is going to give people an opportunity to be introduced to something that they may have not thought about, may have not ever dreamed about, and it could put them in a position to, you know, move up in the community. And that's what we're all about, you know, trying to bring people up. You know, it's not about, you know, being greedy or anything like that. It's just trying to bring people up, trying to help people be better. This program is going to provide you with some of the best workers you'll ever have, some of the safest workers you'll ever have, and that's a fact. And like I said, you know, I don't think that, I don't think that temp agencies should be the leading labor organizers in our city. So, again, thanks for the consideration on this, and thanks for listening.
Welcome.
Hello. Hi. Good evening. I'm Shawn Williams. I'm from Iowa City. I've been here 20 years.
Will you bring the mic closer, please?
I'm Shawn Williams. I've been here in Iowa City 20 years. I have eight kids and 15 grandkids. I took this program because I wanted my son to do something different with his life, and so he was interested in it. So, I told him that I'll go with him because I want to always try something different anyway. So, me and my son graduated from this program, and we really appreciate it because after he finished the program, he entered the carpentry program. And so, I have an interview tomorrow, so I'm just going to see what that's going to be like because I'm a teacher at City High. So, this program was very educated, and I just wanted to let women know that they can participate in this program too. It's not just for men. So, I appreciate y'all, and I thank y'all for the program and supporting it.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Azenea. I live in Iowa City. We just graduated from the apprenticeship program November 19th, and I must confess, the program is a helpful one. We get to learn about different trades, and we visited different trade companies. It was really a helpful one because there are some trades we don't know about, but with the help of this apprenticeship program, we get to know a lot about them. So, I must say, the trade is a helpful one, and I would appreciate if the contract is continued. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
Hello, Mayor. This is Pauline. I'd like to start. I'd like to, first of all, thank Robin and Paul for your presentation. It was very helpful in understanding the actual program. And also, thank you to those students who were brave enough to stand up and speak. That really helps too, to know that personal aspect of it. I've been familiar with the Labor Center for many years, probably at least 40 now, and have heard great things about all the programs that they have ever presented. As Robin recent, said, they recently celebrated 70 years of being in existence, which is an amazing milestone. I see this as a win-win for everyone involved, especially the individuals who will have the opportunity to enter an apprenticeship program that will help them to build a strong life and future for themselves. My late husband went through an apprenticeship program in the building trades and then on to be a journeyman, so I have a soft spot in my heart for anyone who follows that path. I will very happily be voting in favor of funding for this program.
So, I will speak as someone who also has skin in this game. My, my daughter is finishing up her first year as a carpenter's apprentice with the Carpenters Union. It is, it is a life-changing program that is giving her skills that she will be able to use her entire life wherever she goes. The, the other thing that, that's really tremendous about it is not only does it teach people skills and give them a true living wage, but it will also allow us as a community to staff a lot of these big projects from within our community without bringing, without having to bring in people from other states. These are really good jobs that will be in this community, and as we, as we funnel people through these programs, we will have more qualified carpenters, pipe fitters, electricians, and so forth to be able to, to work on those job sites.
I'll just thank you all for the presentation and for having it be so well-rounded, both the sort of technical aspects of what the program can be and has been, as well as those of you who have participated and can speak to your personal experiences. So, I am very much in favor of this and just want to highlight the family-supporting jobs that Paul kept saying, and the fact that, you know, Greg, you said, bring people up, right? That's what we want to do, and, you know, targeting these particular groups of people who historically have not had as many of those opportunities is phenomenal. And also, as Jasper, you said, you know, the opportunities for collaborating among nonprofits, right? And just seeing that kind of just cohesion and synergy among all of those opportunities and, you know, kind of coming out of this program that will have some, hopefully, staying power, right? That's great. So, thank you.
I love any program that's a win-win-win-win all the way around, and so, it's great to have this before us. Since we first heard the proposal or early, early mentions of this proposal, I've been looking forward to the day when it finally got to this point where we could vote on it, and so, I'm excited to be here, and thank you for the presentation and for all those who spoke tonight.
Yes, thanks for the really comprehensive presentation on the program and, you know, highlighting some of the comments that you've made on the sustainability of building our local trades, diversifying at the same time the building trades, forming the partnerships among the various entities involved, and family-supporting jobs. I think that's a really nice way of putting it. And then I would add that this is work with dignity. You know, I really, we have so many, so what seemed like just a diminishing opportunity for being able to work with dignity, and I think this is a path to that, and it's just critically important to our community to have those types of jobs. So, thank you.
I was just going to...
I was just going to, I heartily agree with all the comments that have been made, and I am thrilled to support this project. But one of the things that struck me and that Robin has talked about and Jasper as well, about sort of the way in which connections and relationships are forged and strengthened, right? So that at some point, there can be direct relationships, but it becomes this network, and, oh, I keep hitting that, sorry, a web that continues to get strengthened. And in another context, in a meeting, we were talking about the success of businesses about, so much of it has to do with relationships, not about, guess, you have to have a good business plan, but it's also about the relationships that are built and the trust and the, you know, and the way in which you can help one another, right? Relationships begat relationships begat success. And this is also cooked into this plan over time. And so what you were talking about, the sustainability of it. This is just a fantastic program, and there's so many other components of it that are coming out in the comments that the students have brought up. And thank you for talking to us about the program. And then from those who are saying, "we're the pipeline. We can't get enough of them. Come on." It's just, this is great, and thank you so much for putting so much effort into making this and standing it up, and not saying, "this isn't a pilot anymore. Let's keep this going so that it's right here, its home ground in the community, and it can just continue to be strengthened." Thank you.
Well, a happy birthday to the UI Labor Center. 70 years, that's a long time. And so really appreciated everyone that came forth. Of course, the technical part that Counselor Burgess talked about. Really appreciated hearing that. But more so, I really appreciated seeing individuals come and talk about the program and their personal experience. And what I heard and what I saw was diversity. What I heard and what I saw was exposure to different trades and things that they had never thought about. Also, what I heard very clearly is that opportunity, as well as that financial pathway, to some of the things that we're talking about on a daily basis here at the city, affordable housing. Well, if we can really, you know, have opportunities for people to get a job that can pay a living wage, then some of those concerns diminish with the stuff that we do here. Accessibility, it seemed like it's very accessible. I know that the word still needs to get out and needs to be marketed to a lot of individuals, should this pass. And also, something that I heard that I was excited about was, you know, this is something for four years, and I'm hopeful that this will be something that is self-sustained or transferred, you know, in the future, that it'll just be in the fabric of the community, that this will not, you know, just be something that will happen. When we talk about the ARFA funds, one of the things that the federal government wanted was to make sure that we built resilient communities. And this is the one perfect example of using funds to make sure that people and individuals are more resilient, because we don't know what the future is going to hold for us as a nation and as a community. So I will support this happily. All right. So I think we are ready for roll call.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed. A seven to zero. Item number 13, adoption of City Council fiscal year 2023 through fiscal year 2028 strategic plan. This is a resolution adopting Iowa City City Council's strategic plan fiscal years 2023 through 2028. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Burgess?
Second. Alter?
All right, and we'll get comments from our city manager, Jeff Ruin.
Well, I'm going to jump right in and skip to page 643, which is in the weeds of your strategic plan. It says, "to partner with stakeholders provide meaningful career development opportunities, pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs." So we're well on our way with the strategic plan. So the actual item starts on page 624 of your packet, if you're following along. This has been a more involved process than we have gone through with strategic plans in the past. I think council made a very wise and bold decision to move from a two-year strategic plan to a five-year. I think it allowed you to think a little bit more broadly. It allowed you to establish some long-term visions that I think will be very helpful in guiding future decisions at this table and within the staff realm too. But what's before you is a new look strategic plan that builds on the foundation of your previous strategic plans. I'm not going to go through it in detail, but as a reminder, we did identify values, and those are partnerships and engagement, climate action, and racial equity, social justice, and human rights. I think there's some great narratives along with those values that will guide our day-to-day operations going forward. You also identified four impact areas and related strategies that you really wanted to have some influence on in the next five years. Those are neighborhood and housing, mobility, the economy, and safety and well-being. So within each of those categories, we have strategies and specific action steps to help us achieve the vision that you've set. And this plan also identifies the resources that are needed to carry those out. Not only the resources to carry out specific action items, but the resources needed to continue to invest in the core services that enable us to look at those value-add items as a city. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the strategic plan, but this resolution would formally adopt that and allow us to move forward on that implementation piece, which I mentioned is well underway.
Any questions for Jeff? All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one. Counsel discussion?
I think this was such an interesting way to start a first year on the council, is going through this comprehensive strategic planning process. So I feel like, you know, it was such a wonderful crash course in so many things beyond just the day-to-day. So it was really great. I'd like to thank all of my fellow members of the council and city staff, and of course, our facilitators, for the many hours of work and discussions and planning that we put into this. It was actually, I felt, a very rewarding process, something that I think is going to continue to yield fruit for us for years. And it is a flexible document, so this is not written in stone. As things change in our city, we are able to adapt, but we're able to do it with some sort of course in mind at the outset. So I just wanted to say, to express my gratitude for all of those who were involved in this process. It was really rewarding to be on the inside of it.
I'm actually really grateful that it ended up being, I think the process maybe took a little longer than we first had anticipated, but I think all of the depth of that was really helpful. And then timing-wise, it ended up giving us the opportunity to kind of see the Better Together 2030 Vision come out, and the Inclusive Economic Development Plan, and of course, the EC CAG Envision East Central Iowa Plan. And I think this just gives us the scaffolding to, or just, you know, the structure to really know if we're on target with so many of our actions. And I am very excited as we have difficult conversations that are ahead, particularly as we look at, you know, the budget challenges with changes in property tax legislation that are still, that we're still feeling the effects of, and the headwinds, as it says in the plan, that we have ahead. I just feel like this is such a good, like, guiding document and North Star, where we can just really concretely check ourselves. Okay, we bought into this process. We think this is a good plan. Are we on track or not? And to have that regular check-ins and reporting, it's just really exciting. So I'm really proud of us and grateful for doing it.
This is an enormous amount of work, and it's one thing to sort of see a lot of sticky notes on glass walls, and then to have it emerge finally as this, with these, you know, vision, a roadmap, the how we're going to do it, with dates, that will very much help guide our discussions so that we don't have to feel like we have to grasp at every great idea. We have something that can help us along the way, and we can kind of compare and think about great ideas as they emerge, and how does that fit in with what we have collectively decided are our values and how we want to enact them in the city over the next five, seven years, what have you. So I think it's, as Laura said, it's a fantastic kind of guide for us. It's not written in stone, but it is so embedded in some really deep conversations. And just, good lord, the amount of effort that this represents is tremendous, and I want to thank everybody that was involved. But this seems to me such a great document for us to be able to refer to and make it very well-thumbed over, over the next five years, so that we can keep seeing where we're at. And it can work as a North Star, as you said, Laura. It's a perfect description. It's going to keep us honest, right, and focused. So this is awesome.
Yes, it was, you know, having been through several of these, this was by far the most comprehensive strategic plan that has been developed since I've been on the council. I mean, we are facing just a, in some respects, kind of an overwhelming set of challenges, all of which are, as I learned through Black Lives Matter and COVID, are interrelated, interrelated and systemic. So it really presents an extraordinary challenge to try to capture that, you know, that array of issues that we're facing in a comprehensive, in a strategic plan, and to give it any kind of manageable timeframe. So we shall see. You know, I appreciate its ambition. You know, I think we've all put our good faith into coming up with a plan that we're proud of, and that I hope the community, not too many here at this point, and at least in person, I don't know how many are watching or listening in, but, you know, I would encourage the public to read the document. One of the insights I've been having since we've developed this is the importance of trying to apply ecological principles to a strategic plan. And one of those principles would be feedback. And so feedback is critical in terms of how we think about this document, how we go about its implementation. But I think the framework is sound. Again, I would like, I'm personally trying to understand it through the window or lens of ecology, because I think we can arguably say that nature presents us with a model of what sustainability and resiliency truly is. And so by adopting those principles and making sure that our actions in the strategic plan are consistent with those principles, I think we'll advance the program successfully as we move forward. So thanks to all for the effort.
I'd say briefly, this was a really rigorous process, but it really required a lot of everyone. One of the things I really appreciated was this framing it with this environmental scan, which I don't think we've done before to that sense, so that we can really take a look at all the different factors that are going to be putting pressure on, changing, affecting this as council and the city move through it, and mostly things over which council has very little, very little impact. So I think it's very useful to have that in the frame so that you can see as you go forward what impact the workforce had, what impact racial income equality had, what impact the legislature has, what is done with funding. And it's really key to acknowledge that, that this is not an island that all these other factors apply.
Counselor Taylor?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, I echo what all my fellow counselors have said, and also especially what Counselor Thomas said, because I, like him, have been in on this type of planning for the last seven years now. And this certainly was the most rigorous and strenuous episode of planning that we've been through. But it forced me to take a real serious look at what my vision for the community is for over the next four or five years. So I think it was very helpful that way, and I think our facilitator was excellent in drawing that out of people to say, "well, what is it that you really want? What do you think we can and should accomplish?" So, yeah, I'm pretty proud of the document, and we'll just see where it goes over the next few years.
So when I heard about all the Post-it notes, I had that vision of us, you know, putting them on both sides of the wall where we were. And there were a lot of ideas, lots of ideas. And then when we got the document where it combined not only the council thoughts, but also the staff thoughts. And again, it was a lot of things that were there, and we know that the community was at the heart of all of these. And so what I want to do is really say thanks to EC CAG, Karen, and all of the team there for making it happen, for really coming alongside council and the Iowa City community to create this document. I want to say thanks to our staff, because I know that this was not an easy undertaking. For them to feel comfortable, I think, to really share some of the needs that they see for this community, and even for our fellow counselors, thanks to each of you, because I know that this was not an easy one, right? We had homework that we had to prove that we did, right? And it was a great exercise. But I think at the end of the day, what I've heard is that this was different. This was an opportunity for us all to maybe step back and reset what those priorities were. We were used to coming in on a yearly basis, and maybe there was a little pressure to get it done within a certain amount of time. But we took our time and stepped back and really dove into this, and I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it. Ultimately, I think this is, it's really, when I look at the City of Iowa City Strategy Map and the components that are there, it talks about the values and the impact and the resources that we have. This is so, I think this is very critical as we move through this next phase, that we really do pay attention to the elements that are there, because it will help guide some of those priorities that our city want and deserve. And so ultimately, thanks to the City of Iowa City community for ensuring that this is the, really the values that we hold and that we work towards as, really as a community. So with that, we will take roll call.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed. A seven to zero. Item number 14 is City of Iowa City 2023 State Legislative Priorities. This is a resolution establishing the City of Iowa City's 2023 State Legislative Priorities. And could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Alter?
Second.
Second.
All right, move by Harmsen and seconded, I'm sorry. Move by Alter, seconded by Harmsen. You were a little slow there. I'm sure it was the delay. All right. We're going to welcome our deputy city manager, Redmond Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'd like to take a couple moments to go over our legislative priorities. But before that, I'd like to share a real quick little story about myself. So I had the opportunity to be a part of a team that took a neighborhood idea and followed it through to actually turn it into a state law here in Iowa. It took two years to do that, and I was told that was like warp speed. I can tell you from the neighbors and the constituents' standpoint, it took forever. So I share that story with you just to let you, but also the public, know that a lot of these priorities that we'll be covering briefly is ideas and priorities from previous years. But it takes time, and you have to stick with it. I think that- I think that is the, the important piece to actually trying to get things actually passed through the legislature. So bear with me if these sound familiar, because they are. And for our new council, I know that you have went through these, but our priorities are really focused in six major categories. And I'll take those categories and then talk about some of the brief points in each one of those categories. So to start off, demonstrated leadership in climate action. So we're going to continue these priorities. We'll continue to encourage the state to adopt a 2021 International Energy and Conservation Code and provide the cities the ability to make local amendments. The city also encourages the state to initiate a statewide climate action plan and invest directly in environmental and ecological efforts that will support all Iowans. Our priorities also will encourage legislation that will allow investor-owned utilities the ability to implement community solar projects. This will allow for rate users to actually get credits to use towards their utility bills. This is an item that has been a new one added to a previous, previous category. Moving on to the next one, advanced social justice and racial equity and human rights. In that area, we want to continue to push the governor and the legislature to take those governors' focus committee recommendations for criminal justice reforms. We also encourage legislation to provide the adequate funding for crisis intervention and mental health care. Next category is to update our public facilities and infrastructure financing laws. This is something that we've been working on and I think we're getting some traction on this year as we expect to have it, at least we have some folks that's willing to sponsor it in legislations, which is the first time. And, and essentially this is going to update 30-year-old municipal bonding laws. And as you know, with the recent events of supply chain issues and inflation issues, not to mention the normal cost of adjustment that comes with construction costs go up every year or average years, four to seven, and it's even been higher than that, four to seven percent, it's even been higher than that. So it's time for that to happen and now with the, the environment of, of all these other issues, I think we might actually be able to make some inroads in that area. Also, we want to continue support with DNR and the REAP funding that's helped us in many of our, our parks and rec projects. And so we want to continue supporting that. Next area is, again, we've been hearing this theme a lot tonight, foster healthy neighborhoods and affordable housing throughout the city of Iowa City. We want to continue to press for protecting home rule. We also support the efforts of our USG and want to support a bill that was introduced last session that protects tenants against unfair withholdings and requiring landlords to use clear documented checklists at the start and ending of lease agreements. We also support legislation in protecting the rights of manufactured home housing residents and promote equitable access to high-speed internet broadband and, and those type of infrastructure needs. Going, moving on to the next major area is promote an inclusive and resilient economy throughout the city of Iowa City. In this area, we, we want to advocate for additional education funding for including early childhood education and care. We also support continued use of federal funding to support residents and businesses in recovery from COVID-19. Our last area is strengthening community engagement and, and the governmental relations. Iowa City has had a history and longstanding working relationship with Iowa League of Cities and, and their agenda and also the Metro Coalition and we continue to work in those efforts. So if you have any of the questions, want to delve in deeper into those, I'd be happy to try and answer those questions.
It's sort of a question slash comment. One of the things that I noticed under the, it was an early category concerning social justice. And I noted it, that it was a continued priority to encourage the state to review sort of its oversight or its regulations and stipulations for community police review boards. And the language that I noted was in order to ensure that individual boards have sufficient oversight powers. So can you just expand on that a little bit? I think I understand what that means, but can you?
Well, I, I think there's some, there's some limits to what the police review boards can do, right? And a lot of that has to do with what the state law allows. So I think there's, there's been a push to actually have some boards be able to have a little bit more control over being able to get it a little deeper into what is the ultimate outcomes to some of their, their decisions, because a lot of times there are personnel type of issues and they don't really see what happens to the end of those. So they like to see it maybe a little more transparent to see in those issues, in those areas and get a little bit more into the outcomes outside of just looking at what actually happened to, to got them to that decision. So they're constantly looking at ways. I actually had been involved in some research in this area early on in my career and those boards are always looking at more ways to, to get more involved. But there's also a bill of rights for police officers, so you have to weigh all those issues. And I, I think they're finding that perfect balance is, is always a, a concern back and forth when looking at those kind of things.
Is it fair to say right now that the, the state at any rate is, it's, it's not exactly at a perfect balance because the state is pretty much saying, you can look at this, but in terms of being able to sort of see what happens, that's not in the purview. And so there's a certain amount of interest to be able to say, can we put a little more teeth into, in a certain sense, in the same way of home rule? I mean, I, I don't want to get in the weeds, but I'm kind of trying to understand it just to say that.
Having researched the full recommendations of the, but from what I've been able to see, they're just constantly pushing to get more authority in those areas. So, and I'm sure delving into that would be more specific as what they would like to see, but it's pretty fair that most of the review boards want to have a little bit
want to have a little bit more control over. Okay, thank you.
If I could add onto that real quick, you know, just as a reminder, Iowa City was the only community with a community police review board for a couple of decades. And then after 2020, you saw interest from a number of other cities in creating review boards and, and cities, I think Cedar Rapids, Coralville even went through this. A number of them were considering how to move forward. And what this priority speaks to is now that there is statewide, more statewide interest in creating these boards, the state should really take a look and, and have some discussions about the, the authority. We've, we can learn from other communities that are exploring this here in Iowa, but we can also learn from communities across the country. But historically, when we were that only community with the CPRB, there were calls almost annually for additional legislative power, or not legislative power, oversight for the, for that CPRB. So we just recognize that our community has made that call several times. There is a, a state restriction there and we're not suggesting specific legislation other than the state should probably take a look and do a comprehensive study.
And to be clear, that was kind of, you put it way better than I did, but that was kind of my question was just that this is something where the state has, to be really blunt about it, has more authority and has hamstrung abilities of individual boards to perhaps have a little bit more control. And this is just something that we want to look into, but it's, it's not, it's not us that's doing it, in other words. This is for us to have as a state-led priority.
Yeah, I think you, you, you saw it, it was part of your work session today. It seems like every couple of years at least, we're, we're tweaking our CPRB ordinance here and we're trying to do the best that we can. That balance that, that Redmond talked about is still there. The officers have rights, they should have rights and, and it's just something that hasn't been analyzed on the state level because there was an interest outside of Iowa City for so long. It's a, it's a good time in my view for a, a statewide entity to look at it through a broader lens.
If I would add too, you may recall that the CPRB actually, I think it was, as part of the Black Lives Movement, Matter Movement, came forth with a number of recommendations to city council and kind of toward the same thing, to try to get a little more oversight, a little more power, a little more review. And our, our office had to issue a memo and basically said, we can do this, we can try this, can't do this, can't do this, can't do this, can't do that because of state law either, well, mostly the Peace Officer Bill of Rights in Chapter ADF.
All right. No further questions. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion?
Well, you've got your work cut out for you, Janice.
That's one person.
Yes, I think this will be, you know, thank you to the staff and everybody. And I know that we're all, we'll all be diligent watching what's going on in Des Moines because it really does have such profound effects on what we can do for our community and the quality of life in our community. So important stuff and, you know, definitely we'll be keeping a close eye.
I, I would say that in addition to what you have on the wish list here, and I've actually, I'll, I'll let you know that my number one ask is for local government as a committee, they haven't made assignments yet. We have to keep a really close eye on what they want to do with property taxes because that's the future of every city, municipality, county in this, and school district in this state right now.
Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 15, it's announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, January 3rd. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals, one vacancy to fill, one vacancy for a licensed plumber to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, HBA representative or qualified by experience or training, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Senior Center Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. And vacancies will remain open until filled. We are at council, city council members, information and updates.
So I'm, I'm going to take the opportunity to, to speak a little bit now to, to thank you all. It's a little bit of an odd moment, but it's been, it's been a huge honor to serve. And I see our job as really being that of public servants. We serve you, any of you who are still watching. To, to any of you and all of you who listen to meetings and engage, thank you. We need community engagement. This is the level of government that has the most direct effect on your lives. And even though we don't respond during public comment, we really do listen. We may not always agree, but you often bring salient points to us, you help educate us and can shift how we view issues. To all my colleagues on council, both current and past, I could not have asked for better, more committed people with whom to work. We test each other. We come at things from different angles and we bring different experiences and I view the, the, this diversity of viewpoints as a strength. But I, I'm convinced that we are all passionate about our desire to make Iowa City the most welcoming, vibrant, diverse, thriving, walkable, sustainable community that we possibly can. To city staff, you care about this community. You work really hard, often with no recognition. And one of the things for which I'll always be grateful is the opportunity to learn from you and work with you. It's sort of, it's like so much goes into the working of a city and making city services run that you learn from, once you have a view behind the scenes, it's remarkable. You make it work. You've all been through a lot these last few years and you continue to give it your all. I think particularly like of Kelly and like moving us around, moving us to the senior center, because like there's, there's always a ton of learning Zoom from the beginning. Everyone who serves on a city commissioner board, who, who takes the time to apply for them, who serves on this, on all these different organizations, we're lucky to have you as committed citizens. And also to colleagues and other levels of local government, we've served together on boards, worked together for the good of the citizens of this county, and I'll still be serving with you when I'm in Des Moines. It definitely was an unexpected few years. We spent the majority of it on Zoom or, and/or masked. I really appreciated the opportunity to work with colleagues to try and keep us as informed, as safe and safe as possible during the pandemic, pushing out information. If you remember the earlier days, pushing out information, pushing out videos in multiple languages, I was actually your imperfect French-speaking voice. We worked with different levels of government, both behind the scenes, we worked with student government, with, with USG, with university, with county health. And it was all for, to try and keep people well. We also, as you referenced, Mayor, learned and are continuing to grow and learn and struggle from the social, summer of social justice and Black Lives Matter. And our business community has made a lot of progress. I mean, I think that, that COVID in some ways really catalyzed people at all different levels to work together. We look at Better Together 2030, that wouldn't have, it's, and what's happening also with ICAD and the Iowa City Business Council, I don't think any of that would be happening had, ironically, had the pandemic not happened. And that, and then we have a new SMID and we have all this vibrant activity in the We also have an abundance of amazing committed nonprofits here in Johnson County. We've talked about them some this evening. They serve our citizens in so many ways in concert with local government. They've shown themselves to be resilient and nimble during the pandemic, but I have to say, to me, the foundational purpose of government is to provide the resources so that we can all succeed and so that all citizens have the chance to thrive. And I see the state as pushing more and more onto the shoulders of local government and nonprofits while limiting the resources available to both. That's not how it should work. I would love to see the state supporting Iowans rather than pushing unfunded and defunded mandates down to the local level. We're really fortunate to live in a community that supports these services goals. Not everyone has, has that ability. So finally, we've endeavored to craft a strategic plan that, that really follows and, and is based on inclusive values. And we're doing that at a time when we're witnessing actions around this country and in this state that are working against inclusivity and diversity. When people, whether in a position of power, groups or individuals punch down on already vulnerable communities or propagate hate, they hurt us all. And what endangers one group, as we've discussed, Mayor, won't end there. We just saw it in Colorado Springs at Club Q. We saw it in Buffalo, New York, the supermarket in Pittsburgh at the Tree of Life synagogue. We saw it on January 6th in Charlottesville. Rights, I sort of base my views on the fact that rights don't get sliced and diced and reduced like pie. reduced like pie. They're not limited. They expand, they grow, they uplift, and they enrich us all. So thank you all. You can't get rid of me. I look forward to, my Senate district is approximately the same as my city council district, so I look forward to continuing to represent you and work with you all just in a different capacity. It's been a real honor. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the council, we absolutely do certainly appreciate all of your contributions. And as I was mentioning earlier, you will be missed. And we look forward to continuing to work with you as a city body in your new role. All right. Any other updates by council?
I do have one. It's just a reminder to people that the survey for the senior center has opened, and if you go to icgov.org, and then in the search box, hit, click in senior center, it'll take you to the online survey. But then there are also a couple of input sessions as well. One of them is tomorrow at Mercer between 5:00 and 6:30. And then there are two Zoom sessions, one on Friday, December 9th, and one on Sunday, December 11th. And the information specific to those and how you get the links is actually through that icgov.org senior center page. And I just mention it because we are at kind of ground zero here. We have had, Latasha Deloche came earlier in the year to sort of say, here's what's needed here, our options, here's, you know, what are the desires, here's what we know right now, but we need more input, and that's, this is what this is. And so I just heartily encourage everyone to go fill out the survey. It won't take a lot of time, but it really is a way for your voice. We've had a lot of discussion about feedback and input, and this is going to be a way for us to be able to sort of co-create what the future is going to look like for the senior center. And so, anyway, go to our website and take the survey, or sign up and give some input in person or on Zoom.
All right, we're going to move on to item 17, which is reports on items from city staff, city manager's office.
Nothing tonight.
City attorney?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Our city clerk?
No, thanks.
Then we are on to item number 18. And your last meeting here on city council for the City of Iowa City. So could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.